Oh, the rec council guy, I don't know, the rec council guy.
I'm just gonna call him rec council guy.
Rec council guy.
R C G.
Well, so.
On the order of the town council meeting for February fifth, two thousand twenty-five, if everyone would rise and join with me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Our meetings are recorded electronically. We go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to have something placed on the agenda, we should have had it to the town hall by three o'clock on the previous Wednesday of the last month. Anyone wishing to speak tonight over here in front of our town attorney, sign up. Approval of minutes from January second, two thousand twenty-five town council meeting, they have been emailed out to everybody. Do I hear a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes from the January second, two thousand twenty-five town council meeting. All those in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
So do so Carrie. Before I give my report, I'd like to introduce one of our young residents, Mr. Ethan Shaw. He's here for a reason, and I'm gonna let him have the floor. Come up front, sir. And if you want to turn around, that way they can see you on TV.
What's your name?
Um, Ethan Shaw.
And what grade are you in?
I'm in sixth grade.
And why are you here?
Because I am trying to get a Boy Scout badge and I need to visit town council.
Town council meeting?
Yeah.
All right, and you're doing that?
Yes.
All right, great to have you here. Thank you, sir. All right, mayor's report for for January two thousand twenty-five, a little lengthy. I'll try to go through most of these as fast as possible. Met with town manager Di and councilman Huffman to review staffing positions, coordinated with town attorney Ostrander in writing up an M O U between the town and the New Windsor Fire and Hose Company number one for the two eleven High Street property. This will be on the agenda for the February work session. Confirmed with State Highway Administration that we will be included and notified of monthly virtual streetscape planning meetings, and that's next, what, the twelfth February, I think the next one is, I think, so.
It's gonna be the second Wednesday.
We're sorry, I had to, well, we'll be attending it. Finalized plans for the March nineteenth M M L Carroll Chapter Dinner to be held at Windsor Station. I hope we have a good turnout of council members and staff. Communicated with congressman Johnny Ozeski, and from here on out, I'm gonna go with Congressman Johnny O, who offered me two presidential inauguration tickets. Unfortunately, it was held inside, so we were unable to go. We also discussed future congressionally directed spending. I also invited Congressman Johnny O to visit New Windsor and to sit down with us to discuss the town's needs and issues. In addition, Congressman Johnny O and Chris Yule, his director of ingovernmental and external relations, attended the Carroll County Commissioner's reception, where councilman Cornick and I talked to them about visiting New Windsor. I knew Chris from when he was on Governor O'Malley's staff, so you know, he's familiar with the town of New Windsor. I attended and spoke at a leadership lunch at Northwest Middle School. I spoke to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students about my experience as mayor. All three of the Shadow students from December were in attendance and spoke about the experiences at the town council meeting. Connor Roberman, now in the seventh grade, read the letter that he sent me when he was in the fifth grade requesting assistance to getting to getting to the basketball court safely from Athley Ridge, which is now a program open space project that will be built hopefully sometime this year over in Athley Ridge. I talked to the seventh grade students about participating in next year's Shadow Meeting if it continues. I participated in an M M L Mayor's webinar lunch and learn session. This was kind of a throwback. Nobody was living in New Windsor probably at this time, and I look around, but I received an email from Wyn Phillips, who spent the first twelve years, nineteen sixty-five through nineteen seventy-eight of his life at one thirty-one Church Street, right across from Rupp's Grocery, which is now Linda Donaldson's house and across from Uncle Matty's. He often frequented the store, most often to buy candy from the penny candy section. He has fond memories of my dad, me, and my grandfather. He said, "You all were always friendly and welcoming, even though I was usually spending on average about twenty cents a visit." It's one of the many fond memories I have of New Windsor. Wyn wrote to let me know that he named a radio show he does on a local community radio station, W M P G in Portland, Maine, after Rupp's Grocery. The station is part of the University of Southern Maine and is staffed mostly by volunteers like him. Rupp's Grocery airs every other Sunday morning from eight-thirty to ten. It's a music show, and he plays all different genres with a heavy emphasis on jazz and instrumental music. He refers to the store because I play three long sets, and three is important because of my of his memory. Serves correctly, which he is, Rupp's had three aisles, so I just thought that was kind of a little flashback many, many years ago. On Saturday, January twenty-fifth, I gave a tour of DMN to potential investors. They were very excited about purchasing the inn and undertaking the restoration to make the inn a New Windsor destination spot. This will be discussed in a closed session this evening. On January twenty-fourth, I went to Runnymede Elementary School to talk to the fourth grade about the M M L If I Were Mayor essay contest. They seemed very interested in the cash award and meeting Governor Moore if they won. I met with Brad Guest at Sibley's Fields this past week to look at what is needed to get the field in playing condition. Brad has a nine-year-old baseball team that wants to use the field. Town manager Di sent Brad an email explaining the steps he would have to compete, complete to use the field. Brad is going to include the name New Windsor in the name of the team. And there's all my meetings listed below. The upcoming meetings and events, S H A Virtual Streetscape Planning, and then an evening in Annapolis on the third Monday with the District Five delegation, and that is my report.
That streetscape is the twelfth.
Twelfth, okay. And we had a little confusion on the first email from State Highway Administration. It came out about two o'clock in the afternoon stating that the meeting had already been that day, which it hadn't been that day, but the first meeting of this year will be next week, so hopefully we can get that back on track. Community enhancement, Councilwoman Schultz has an excuse to not be here, but I have her report. Attended, she attended town council meeting, town council work session, H S P Executive Committee, H S P Board Committee, Carroll County Downtown Meeting, which met in early February to discuss, or they will meet in early February to discuss ideas for the one thousand per community from Carroll County Tourism, based on her research so far. She is learning leaning towards purchasing signage for one of our historical sites. Events for the two hundred and fifty eighth History Project, and also will discuss shop, small passport, twenty-four and twenty-five. H S P, which is a board member, is again offering free income tax preparation for those with a twenty twenty-five household income of less than sixty-seven thousand dollars. Assistance is available in English and Spanish. There is more information about H S P services available here at town hall, or you can call H S P at four one zero three eight six 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 four, or visit the H S P website. Contact reminder, if residents have a question or concern, the best way to contact town staff is to call or email the town office. The phone number is four one zero six three five six six five seven five, and the email info at new windsor M D dot org. This information, the hours of operations are available on the website. Public Works, Councilman Huffman?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Public Works handled three snow events where they salted and plowed the roads. I believe they did a great job as all the roads were cleared expediently and remained safe to traverse. Unfortunately, many town residents did not remove their vehicles from the roadway when the snow emergency was declared by the State Highway Administration. This causes delays in plowing and puts our town Public Works crew in dangerous situations. In the future, please move your vehicles during snow emergencies. Check the town newsletter for suggested off-street parking areas. Public Works oversaw the delivery of two tandem loads of salt that they moved into the salt barn. We still have about half of that left. Obviously, future weather conditions will dictate if we have enough for the remainder of the season. Public Works also washed down all the salt equipment and trucks following the winter weather. This, of course, helps ensure the town assets remain operational and in good shape. Public Works picked up the Christmas trees three times during the month of January, and Public Works took advantage of some of their in-time inside time by cleaning up the shop and spent time during the warmer days to clean up the gear lane dumpster area. The planning commission did not meet in January. The next scheduled meeting is Monday, February twenty-fourth at six P M. And as Mayor Rupp mentioned, I attended the meeting with him and town manager Di to talk about some personal staffing matters and attended the town council scheduled meetings.
Thank you. And I also approached Master Deputy McGinnis about the parking issue during snow removal, so he's hopefully going to be addressing that, so appreciate that. Thank you. Water and Sewer, Councilman Hall?
All right, so the tonight I have a combined report with Public Works Director Myers and myself, as he's out on vacation. So most of the site work prep has been done for the Blue Ridge Pump Station. You might see the construction crews out there. Station's set to be delivered around February tenth. Soon after, they're expecting the installation of the generator and the station itself. Public Works had minimal issues during the last cold snap. Knock on wood that that continues. No town facilities experienced freezes of their pipings. However, we received three calls from residents for no water, and after investigation, it was determined interior plumbing fixtures had frozen. Public Works ordered three heating systems due to failure, one at the sewer station, two at the wastewater treatment plant, chemical room, and electrical room. The town's pressure monitoring system for low pressure was activated during a fire flow test, which is a great indicator that the system's operating, and Public Works is happy with that result. Public Works is installing M X U units on Main Street to finish up that that Main Street project. After installs are complete, then first-class mechanical can come in to remove those interior meters. Due to the weather last month's sewer cleaning for the shared town hall and two eleven building, High Street Building, has been delayed. Unfortunately, the line is clogged with heavy tree roots that will need to be cleared out, and that is our report.
Thank you. Public Safety and Health, Councilman Cornick?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending both virtually and in person. I attended the opioid prevention coalition meeting on January eighth at the Carroll County Health Department. Various statistics regarding overdose cases were shared by the Sheriff's Department. I'd like to take a second to review the highlighted items particularly pertaining to overdose prevention or overdose numbers. The total number of overdoses for the month of January twenty twenty-five increased by thirteen point six percent when compared to the previous month of December two twenty twenty-four, and increasing forty-seven point one percent when compared to January of last year. The number of overdose fatalities for the month of January twenty twenty-five increased by thirty-three point three percent when compared to the previous month of December, and increased by three hundred percent when compared to twenty twenty-four. I know those are kind of not kind of, they're very startling and shocking numbers. I don't know that we have a complete assessment on why this is the case, but I know that folks are are paying close attention to it to see if there's anything that can be done. Fortunately, Carroll County has a good number of resources to help the citizens of the county. It's just a matter of getting to the people that that are in, you know, danger of a potential situation like this. These note, these, these details are alarming to everyone, and sixty-four percent of the total overdoses for January were considered intentional. So that's even more morbid information I hate to deliver to you, but it's the facts that, you know, folks need to be aware of. I'll go back to my report now and just say that I also attended the Vietnam Traveling Memorial Committee Meeting. That was on January ninth at the V F W at in Union Bridge. Various decisions were made regarding the dates and guest speakers and performers. I do know for a fact that Oliver North will be one of the guest speakers at the at the event, and the next meeting will be February nineteenth at six P M. at Union Bridge. I encourage anybody who's interested in participating in the setup of the event, that there will be, there will be a need for sure for people, volunteers, before the event, during the event, and certainly after the event for the breakdown. Okay, so there are some specific dates, and when the next meeting again is on the nineteenth, and I think we'll, I'll fine tune. I'll put those dates out once we have confirmed for sure that the arrival of the the wall and the breakdown of the wall. I also attended the Crime Prevention Grant Meeting at the town hall in conjunction with several members of the council. That was on January sixteen. The meeting was held to discuss the use of grant funds as it relates to the New Windsor Streetscape Project and public safety initiatives. Subsequently, I emailed the project team at the State Highway Administration, asking them to include some of the traffic safety items that Master Deputy, Master Deputy McGinnis suggested prior to our meeting. I have not received a response to that email yet, but I will follow up this week, and now that I know that the meeting is the twelfth, maybe we can follow up there to see if they've, you know, made a decision on those couple items that we talked about, and Deputy McGinnis, thank you for those suggestions. Also attended, as the mayor mentioned, the Carroll County Commissioner's Reception at the Carroll County Office Building on the sixteenth. I met and spoke with elected newly elected Congressman Johnny Olshewski and others. I could not think of his assistant. Also, I'm planning to attend another opioid prevention coalition meetings every other month, so I'll be attending that one in March, and that is my report.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing up Vietnam Traveling Memorial. I forgot, I didn't forget I attended, but I forgot to put that in my my report as well. So there is, there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for volunteers, and more will come as we get closer to that. Economic Development, Councilman Frog?
Good evening. I attended the council meeting on one-two. I met with town manager Di, Treasurer Mangus, and Public Works Director Myers on January tenth. Attended the council work session on January twenty-first. Met with town manager Di again this afternoon. Reached out to our circuit rider, Michael Reynolds, regarding some grant information, and I'm continuing to work the water and sewer and tax rate proposals, gathering data for any anticipated questions. If you have any that come to mind that you want data for the next work session, please shoot it my way, and I'll try to get collected for you.
That's it? All right, thank you. Town manager, Di?
Just have one thing to mention. I've been focusing on the budget. The Blue Ridge Pump Station upgrade is mentioned. We are making some progress, but it has been slow and not without issue. Latest issue is with electrical service and getting scheduling from B G and E to for inspection and everything like that, but they are working through that. Tom McAdams, sorry. And very glad to have Kerry Kruger doing our inspection for us. Kerry is very thorough and experienced, and staff certainly does not have the availability to handle inspection to the level she's providing, and Kerry and I will need to meet with Wayne next week when he gets back to go over his status of that. That's all I got.
All right, and your report? That's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Public Works Director, Ari Hurd, Community Deputy?
Where's the, where's the thing?
Right there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I have a relatively short report today, which is a good thing considering my position. Between January second, two thousand twenty-five and February fifth, two thousand twenty-five, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office logged twenty-nine occurrences, including calls for service, property checks, and traffic stops within the town of New Windsor. Out of those occurrences, two were found to be reportable. On one seven twenty-five at eight fifty-seven A M, a juvenile subject was reported missing from the five hundred block of Main Street. The subject was observed on camera, walking off from the location and entering an unknown vehicle before leaving the area. The subject was later located in San Diego, California, with an adult who was listed as a guardian via administrative paperwork. Information was passed along to the appropriate agencies upon location. On one thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five at eleven fifteen A M, an individual in the three hundred block of College Avenue reported a scam. A phishing email from a job opportunity labeled Project Hope was ultimately the scam resulting in twenty-six hundred dollars in lost fictitious payments. And additionally, if you observed a large presence on one twenty, two thousand twenty-five, between that and one twenty-one, a warrant, the warrant task force is working on a taking of an individual into custody. They were believed to be living in the one hundred block of Church Street, and a successful completion of this occurred on one twenty-one twenty-five. And aside from that, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Carol, rec council, Eric?
You bet.
Right here, yes, I'm right back.
Mayor Myers, I'm Carol Rec. Just a few things. Basketball had a pretty good season, over three hundred case signed up. I think, as I said, twenty-four and fifty volunteered to their programs. Soccer had over four hundred case signed up for the fall season and looking more like five or six hundred in the spring. We're really growing. They had seventy-two volunteers. One thing that we keep talking about is the lack of rest and pumps coming up. They're demanding more money. They're not treated right. I see there's gonna be problems in the future, and it's just, it's on the horizon. I don't know what we can do. Kids aren't getting into it because they're just, people are too abusive to the rest, and we're working on it. We'll get there, I hope. I did mention that town's gonna paint the fire hydrants, and I had two or three different clothes that one of mine to get other kids to help. Was that what we really need, to have kids, you know, come out and help and say, hey, I painted that, or we did this for the town? I thought that was a good idea. Really, that's not it for this time.
All right, and I'll be addressing the hydrants on their announcements, so stay tuned. Fire chief? Chief Primer has an apparatus committee meeting. They're looking into purchasing a new fire truck, but he said January was an extremely busy month with several working incidents with the below-normal temps in January. Moving forward, please use caution with all alternative heating sources. Be sure any space heaters get plugged directly into an outlet and not a power strip. Also, keep the area clean around heating sources. And then there's Tuesday bingo unless the snow emergency plan is active. And money bonanza tickets with Harney and New Windsor are on sale now for the May seventeenth event. That's held up at Harney Fire Department, their carnival grounds, and there's sixty-eight thousand five hundred dollars in prizes, so it's a hot ticket. We sell out every year. Treasurers' Report?
All right, the town election will be Tuesday, May thirteenth, from seven A M. to eight P M. here at town hall. Any town resident, please come out and vote. First day to attain papers to file for nominations will be February tenth, that's this coming Monday. Last day to file those nominations, they must be in by April fourteenth at three P M. It's three oh one, three P M. Last day to register to vote with the county is Monday, April seventh. You can request an absentee ballot at any time. Last day to request an absentee ballot will be Friday, April eighteenth by three P M. Deadline for returning those ballots will be Monday, May twelfth by three P M. A candidate forum will be Wednesday, April thirtieth. I'll contact at C N C, and they will be broadcasting reports. One night will give them more information once we have it.
Thank you.
For election is to council spots and mayor.
Correct, thank you. And you'll post all that on Facebook?
Already got it.
All right, good job. Should have known. Water and Sewer, Billing Clerk?
I don't have much. The latest water bills went out the week of January thirteenth, and as always, if you need help, if you need assistance, please give me a call, and I'm happy to help you.
Thank you. Code Enforcement Officer, John?
Do I need your light?
Yep.
Yes.
Our viewers at home.
You gotta look, you know, you gotta look famous that way.
For the month of January, I had four in lane. Two were inoperable, land vehicles, five辆 destructions, and abandoned unmoved vehicle. Currently, I have two vehicles that were removed. I have two letters that are in follow-up status from letters that were already initially sent, so they've already had second notices sent to them as well. I have one vehicle pending repair to be moved in the next week or so, and three pending letters to be sent for inoperable untagged vehicles, in excessive rubbish, trash, junk, and things that don't belong in yards. Like I said, I'm still taking complaints. Any vehicles you gotta see, anything that you want to need to come look at, and I'm available by email anytime during the day. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, under new business, fiscal year twenty-six budget, continued general discussion?
Now you're gonna get a lot of me. So, proposed employee pay rates have been completed. Include two new positions and filling a vacant position. Pay rates have been sent to Mayor Rupp and Councilmember Schultz. Will need council approval for proposed rates as soon as possible to input into the budget. Currently, we're advertising for three positions: part-time receptionist, public works maintenance worker one, and utility maintenance assistant. Staff meetings continue on a weekly basis. Just a reminder, when we started this year, we started with enterprise fund first. Color key for the budget spread list, which is interesting coming from the colorblind guy, but light blue is revenue, reds expenditures, yellow is to be completed, and the light gray is either new and or lines of line items of note. Proposing trying something new this year. Um, proposing trying something new this year. We're adding capital project line items i- for specific planned projects, uh, under their respective categories, you'll see this throughout the budget and want to get council's feedback on this as we move forward. So starting with the enterprise fund, working down the revenues. Um, uh, usage receipts for water and sewer. These receipts have been calculated using the latest updated EDU and user count from Director Myers and the revenue calculator spreadsheet used for the past couple of years. Sewer usage receipts are lower by s- little over seven thousand based on twenty less users. And water receipts are higher by, uh, almost thirteen hundred based on two more EDUs and one more user. Uh, earned interest, we held at twenty thousand. Um, uh, that would be affected, uh, if we were to pay off any loans, which is an option possibility with the proposed tiered water sewer rate structure that has been discussed. Um, on the expenditure side, um, underwater to be completed yet is, at the bottom there, is, uh, capital project reserves. This is done last to, uh, balance the budget. Line items of note, um, MES, Maryland Environmental Service, uh, just received their, uh, budget yesterday. Um, total for water is one hundred and twenty one thousand three ninety one, which is a thirteen point one, one four percent increase. Uh, the new line items, uh, water quality control at a hundred thousand. This is for various water quality improvements, primarily the lead service line replacement and possible water filtering purification for PFAS and other contaminants that MDE may require testing and treatment for in the future. Engineering services line is at fifty thousand, that's for the various engineers we have working on water projects for us. Uh, rent, uh, Myers building is thirty three hundred, that, the total rent is split fifty fifty and then again fifty fifty within water and sewer under the enterprise. So you'll see that same thing, thirty three hundred, uh, down in, in the sewer as well. Capital vehicles and equipment, uh, for now, um, that is, uh, fifteen thousand, which is twenty five percent of new truck to replace the two thousand thirteen Chevy. Again, truck purchases are split fifty fifty and then again fifty fifty under enterprise fund for water and sewer. Uh, we have to update the, uh, enterprise fund six-year capital project spreadsheet, uh, with, uh, Director Myers, so this is likely to increase. I've done pretty mu- I've updated the, uh, general fund, uh, six-year capital project list. Um, this line item is to account for planned capital projects in, uh, FY twenty six as a line item in the budget. Any questions on water before I move on? Uh, under sewer, to be completed yet is sludge disposal. Uh, currently our hauler, uh, Colson Septic Service, uh, cost per load is, is proposed to increase thirty dollars per load. The projected gallons for fiscal year twenty five is well above what was estimated. So I want to review the projected numbers with, uh, Director Myers and Clerk Treasurer Mangus. Um, uh, but this will increase, um, pretty significantly, so I'll have to get finalized those numbers. The, uh, capital project reserve, again, that's, that's the end, uh, to balance things. Line items of note again is MES for sewer is, uh, total of one sixty five, one oh three, which is a nine point four three percent increase. And then we have another, uh, new line item for engineering services in there at fifty thousand. Myers rent, Myers building rental, thirty three hundred, and then same thing with capital vehicles, uh, in there, which is at fifteen for now, which is basically a quarter of the estimated, uh, cost of a new truck. Any questions on sewer? All right, um, personnel, uh, to be completed yet is the executive and public work salaries. Need approval on those rates, public works overtime and payroll expense. Just as a reminder, payroll expense is only for tracking purposes. Uh, it's not included in the total miscellaneous cat- uh, category at the bottom. It includes federal state, social security and Medicare taxes and is based on pay rate of employees. Any questions there? All right, jumping over to the general fund, or back up to the top to general fund. Taxes, uh, to be, to be complete, excuse me, uh, income tax, that comes from the state, uh, usually around the third, third week in February. And real property comes from the state around that same time. Those are, uh, uh, two big, two biggest revenue generators under taxes there. Um, licenses and permits, uh, just an, an item of note, the town building permits. This is a small item, I just wanted to mention it because, um, we've, the town has charged only five dollars for permit fees for, I don't know how long, forever. Um, so we're looking to increase this to probably around fifteen dollars, but we're also going to review other town fees, BZA annexation, et cetera, and do, uh, collectively do a resolution for that, so I just wanted to mention that, it's not a big line item.
Maybe two dollars at one time.
You're dating yourself, Mayor. Um, all right, intergovernmental, um, to be completed, uh, the county town, county town program and county road grant, uh, that comes from the county again around February twentieth. Um, that's a pretty decent amount of revenue. And then line items of note, uh, the highway user revenue, uh, latest estimate from the state is a little over one, a hundred fifty eight thousand, we conservatively use a hundred and forty, which is an increase of twenty thousand from last year. Our current highway user balance is a hundred and sixty thousand three thirty three. So we should be in, in good shape to get some road paved, get some roads paved in fiscal year twenty six. Um, service fees, just lost my spreadsheet. Service fees, um, that's complete, there's no revenue budgeted. Uh, the only, the revenue you see under, uh, actuals in twenty five was from the, uh, building permit for Springdale Prep, the Windsor Building. So that's, wasn't planned, but that's why you see a, a, a year to date there. And miscellaneous is complete, there's no change there. Any questions on the revenues and general fund? Before I move on. Uh, all right, expenditures, legislative is complete. Executive is complete except for the salaries. Professional services, we're still working on, on this. Um, line items of note, the accounting consultant, uh, we're going to keep in but likely reduce. And the HR consultant, same thing, was new last year, we'll keep in but likely reduce that, so be working on that. 碼式 building, again, still working, new line items. This is a big one here, you'll see under capital projects is, is two hundred twenty five thousand. What that is, is includes basically half of the estimated cost for the salt storage building at Gear Lane and then also for a new roof on one of the buildings down at Gear Lane. Um, again, these are to, this, these line items are to account for planned capital projects in fiscal year twenty six. What we got, planning, planning and zoning is complete. Public Works, uh, I'll be working with, uh, Director Myers on that, we've still got a lot of work to do on that. Uh, we'll be meeting next week when he gets back. Uh, under the capital vehicles and equipment, um, that, that sixty thousand includes the half of thirty thousand, half of the cost to re- uh, to replace the twenty thirteen. That's twenty thirteen, not twenty one oh three Chevy. Uh, a V plow and salt box for the twenty three F two fifty Ford that we purchased, uh, in twenty three and then fifteen thousand for, to replace, oh, uh, for one new tractor, replace the two thousand eleven grasshopper at fifteen thousand. Uh, street and sidewalk maintenance, um, we put it, uh, we increased that twenty thousand to replace, um, uh, storm drain and sewer manholes, uh, in, in typically, I think it's going to be in Atlee and, and Blue Ridge and anywhere else that they're sticking up and the blades are hitting them. So we put half in this fiscal year and half in next fiscal year. Myers rent, uh, rent for Myers building is six thousand. Uh, engineering services is, uh, twenty five thousand there. Um, trash, household and recycling collection. Sing, si- besides MES, it's the single biggest line item we have in the budget. And continues to, to grow. Um, last, if you recall, last year, um, we, uh, council gave direction to renew used contract for a year. So I requested, uh, fiscal year twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight rates for used. Their current rates are per stop of two, two dollars and sixty two cents, and that's three, seven hundred and thirty seven stops. And then we have, um, ten con- convenience receptacles, same, same price per stop, and then two dumpsters per week at two forty. So the proposed fiscal year twenty six rates, um, per stop is two sixty nine. That's a two point seven percent increase. Same thing with the trash receptacles, uh, and no increase on the dumpsters for twenty six. For twenty seven, it increases to two seventy five, which is a two point two percent increase from fiscal year twenty six. Same with trash receptacles and again, no increase in the dumpsters. And then for twenty eight, it goes to two eighty two, uh, per stop, which is two point six percent increase from twenty seven. And then they are adding, increasing the dumpsters in twenty eight, ten dollars, which is a four point two percent increase. So I think these rates are very reasonable and overall, we've been happy with used service. Um, so we can renew for another single year, we can renew for another three years or rebid. Um, I'd rather not rebid due to time constraints, but need some di- direction on, on that so we can get that calculated and plugged in.
I'm extremely always been happy with Hughes. We, we went with low bid one time and that was the longest three-year period.
And if we could, if we could get all increases to the percentages that these are increases, we'd be doing really well.
Oh, yeah.
So, you all good with one year, three years, what's that, your call?
I can get a motion or discussion.
I, I would, I would propose a motion to get the three years, usually that's how we handle it.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'd second that.
We have a motion, second, we go with, uh, Hughes for trash collection for the next three years. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? So, Kerry.
Be in the budget tomorrow. Okay, uh, public safety, uh, that's complete for now, I don't know of any changes, that's just a two-line uh, budget section there. Uh, parks, uh, line item of notice is Capitol Parks Project, you'll see thirty thousand there. That's for the Lions Club Park, uh, roof and, uh, roof and gutters. Um, Public Works also has a list of other Lions Club Park projects, so, uh, we'll discuss and priori- prioritize those with Director Myers. Miscellaneous, um, to be completed is, is insurance. Uh, that's everything but health. And then payroll expense, again, that's just for tracking purposes as previously mentioned. Um, contingency for now, we did, we increased, uh, ten thousand for now. Any questions on expenditures? Any questions at all? Thank you.
Yes.
I know Dave's got questions.
Um, I think I'd like, um, maybe us all have a little more information on the, the town's vehicle situation. Um, you know, we're budgeting purchasing another truck. I'd like to, to throw out maybe, um, purchasing a, um, a side-by-side for the, um, Public Works crew, have talked to some of them about that. Uh, it's kind of like a small vehicle that they can easily use around town, has, some of them have dumping capability, but they could run, do a lot of things around town that they're using these big trucks that we're buying for, you know, running a quarter mile and stopping in a quarter mile, but, um, they're, they're not cheap, they're probably still in the twenty thousand dollar range. But they could be set up with a plow like they use to do sidewalks and things like that. So it would have a lot of, um, purposes that could be used, um, throughout the town and maybe not use the trucks, um, for some of that kind of, I'm not saying we don't need a new truck or need to keep budgeting to keep our truck, uh, fleet in line, but I think maybe something like that, um, could benefit, maybe prolong some of the, the vehicles that we do have.
Yeah, that's, that's in the wishlist as well. He had a budget, Wayne had it in, in around thirty thousand for the four-wheel drive with the plow and, because he was looking for plowing capabilities on sidewalks and even in, in, uh, uh, Snaider Summit where things are really tight, you know, so. It would be, it would be good excess, you know, good vehicle to have, um, for running around.
Plus, it's a lot cheaper than seventy thousand.
Yeah, truck, truck, truck with a V plow and salt box, we, uh, we budget around sixty. Full-size truck, king cab, V plow and salt box.
Side-by-sides can't be street legal. They're tagged.
Okay. Really?
Mm-hmm.
In Maryland?
I just didn't know.
The insurance registration, because I ran into that this past month.
All right.
We'll handle it by making sure we know what to do.
I'll tell, I'll have Public Works call you when they take it out.
Can you make it an emergency piece of equipment?
I think we're, we're doing pretty well on the budget, I think enterprise is probably eighty-five, ninety percent complete. Um, and, and, and general fund, we're, we've got some work to do yet, but I still think it's probably forty, fifty percent complete at this point, so. Just interaction on the, the rates and some other information that we expect at the end of February. It's gonna, it's gonna solidify a lot of that stuff, so. Um, any thoughts on the, the capital projects being in, in the budget? I mean, it's, it's a lot of money, but, you know, it's, 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 I've heard before, you know, when we go to buy a vehicle or we go to do a bigger project, it's not in, in the budget, but it's in the six-year outlook or project planning. Is, you know, where, where we getting the money and it's not in the budget, so.
I, I like, I personally like seeing it in the budget, I like having my eyes on it.
Another way to do it, I haven't figured that out exactly, if we, I think it's going to have a hard hit on the bottom line and balancing the budget by putting them in, which that's yet to be seen in terms of when we run all the numbers, because you had to, all that stuff up and it's, it's a lot of money.
But it, but it is a budget and although we're budgeting for those items, that doesn't mean that we're always going to do all those items as well. But that, that hard hit also shows us what we actually should be looking at trying to generate. And if we don't hit that threshold, then projects aren't getting done and things are just going to degrade and continue.
The roads, for instance, we have them budgeted in, in the general fund six-year outlook, but that's not factored into here right now because we, we, with what we have planned in, in twenty six and what the, what we expect to get on highway user and what our balance is, we should be good to cover that year. But down the road, if you look ahead in the out years, there's some bigger roads. Lampert, and then you start getting into this, the Atlee and Blue Ridge, the roads are wider, they're bigger roads to do. Those are going to be more expensive roads and who knows, we can hope to get highway user revenue, we've always gotten it, but it's not, it's never guaranteed, but there's going to be a point, I think, down in the future where highway user is not going to cover that.
Putting it into the budget keeps it, I think, more on track and like Dave said, not that you have to spend it, but at least it's not just out there being forgotten sometimes, you know? And if, if necessary, we, we do have a reserve that, you know.
Well, that's, that's what I think we'll have to look at once we get closer to completion is, we have to balance this budget. It has to zero out. So if, if it doesn't, you, the options are raise taxes, raise water sewer rates, or you have to look at some kind of transfer to the budget from the reserves of capital and enterprise.
Right.
So, you know, there's got to be some input to balance the expenditures to the revenues. So, we'll see where we, where we land with that, so. So we'll see where we, where we land with that, so.
Well, on behalf of the council, thank you, Dana and Wayne, for your long hours, so thank you.
I got my forty in after this week, I got my forty in this week after tonight's meeting.
All right. Senate Bill three twenty-four, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. I don't know if everybody had a chance to read it. It's emissions and amusement tax on food and beverages that are purchased on-site, and it would go to the local municipality. MML, to my understanding, is supporting this, and even if it is approved, it passes, it doesn't mean that Towne New Windsor has to enact it. We have that, that authority to either enact it or not. Councilwoman Schultz was not too favorable about it, because it affects two of our local restaurants. And they kind of hit hard with everything else. And, you know, I don't know how much it would generate, I tried to get that number, but I haven't heard any answer back what, what that number would be. But just really more, just bring it to everybody's attention, so. We don't have to do anything on it, really, so. And then, Gary, I put, I just wrote down here on the ball fields, as long as Brad Gist does everything on your list of requirements, you're okay with him using the field?
Yeah, I got to get, I got to get, even though he's now planning to use, or they're planning to use the front field, piece of property that was purchased from Lehigh, that property line runs through that field. The whole back field is and part of the front field. So when we did, when Reapers, we did the agreement with Reapers a couple of years ago, per the lease, we have to get permission from Lehigh to do the improvement. So I'll pull the same letter up, I did a couple of years, send it to whoever, I'm sure they're going to be amenable to it, but we got to follow, follow that lease, and then get it into an agreement that whatever work they're going to do.
Do you need council approval, or are you just ready to go ahead, but you want council approval? See, is to kind of speed things up a little bit, is to, for council to approve that Brad Gist to use the smaller field as long as he meets all of the requirements from the town. Personally, I like to see the ball field, both ball fields used, I helped put that one in fifty, probably sixty years ago now, almost, fifty-five anyway. And I'd like to see baseball come back, and maybe we can get our numbers back up and using them. So I'd like for the council to approve, like I say, as long as Brad meets all the town's requirements.
So you need a motion? I'll make a motion to allow Mr. Gist to use the baseball fields as long, as long as he meets the requirements of the town as stated.
Second the motion?
I have a motion and a second, to approve Brad Gist to use the baseball field for his baseball team. Any comments or questions? It does, it's going to need a lot of work, but he's willing to do it. You know, he's going to bring his, his folks in, and, you know, he's, he's, I think, going to do a great job, so.
Do we know who he's associated with? That's part of the information I'm asking him, because we have, we can't do an agreement with an individual because of the insurance and that kind of thing, so we need to know what organization he's with.
He probably told me, I, I can't remember, but there's teams in Westminster I know, and I want to say Tony Town as well.
He didn't give me any, any detail.
He's willing to put New Windsor on the, as the team, so. Anyway, all those in favor, say, can I be saying aye? Those opposed? So carried.
Any, any word or information on the garden?
I just, let me, let me be very transparent. There was mulch when Brad met with me, and, well, talked to me, so I said about the bigger field, he says, well, there's dirt or something down there. So town staff went down, checked, and there's mulch on there. Now, we posted on Facebook just to see who the owner of that was. I don't know if someone over the years asked me if I thought it would be a good idea to have a community garden down on Cybil's Fields, not, I know, I never gave anybody permission.
For home plate?
For home plate, no. So, anyway, one thing led to another, and as you know, on social media, sometimes things can, can get a little ugly, so I thought I would step in and told them that we had bought, or we had sold six-point-nine acres to, at that time, Lehigh Cement Company for a potential rail spur. So if they needed to take the limestone from the New Windsor Quarry to Union Bridge, they would have that. It was a little, it's six-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand or something, I think, it's a little, little under seven-hundred thousand for under seven acres, which I think was a good deal at the time, I think still is. That money we used to remediate the two lagoons at not having to pull funding from our own funds. And I think we even had some left over. So that was taken care of, plus there was dirt later filled in from Westminster. But anyway, we had to take care of basically getting rid of the two lagoons. And with the understanding that we would pay a dollar a year to Lehigh Cement Company for using it, and if we wanted to use it for anything, we, we had to notify Lehigh Cement Company, now Heidelberg Materials. So I think it was a good deal, and I still think it's a good deal. One of the first things, I guess, I did as mayor many years ago, so. What they also had to do, just to add to it for those that weren't aware, they also had to provide, and I'm not sure it was six-point-nine acres, but up off of Shepherd's Mill, they have land designated for a ballpark if the county ever needs a ballpark outside. So that was part of the deal too, because this, the property, we, when we bought Cybil's property, we used program open space for that, so it had to be compensated, and they provided land for the county to use ball field. So that's, we didn't, didn't have that money to invest, you know? You know, so we used it for good purposes, and you can't use that money to lower water and sewer bill. Nothing on that. So probably be interesting to watch social media now, but anyway, any other new business? Old business, water and sewer billing of rental properties, draft ordinance?
Very simple. Added one, two sentences that essentially say landlord, the owners of the property are responsible for the water and sewer bills, and they are going to get the invoices. Because as we all know and have been discussing for quite a while, sometimes tenants don't pay quite as timely as perhaps they intended to. So I, I, I think, and it's just my opinion, the reason that there's an effective blank is I think this is a change, and this is change for landlords and tenants and everything else. So instead of saying effective immediately, which I thought would, would perhaps result in a kerfuffle, we would pick a date maybe to coincide with the water bill system, you know, with when they go out and things like that. But I, I don't know what that date would be, so.
Or we just use July first?
Yeah, whatever, it doesn't matter, I just don't know what it is, so I didn't put it in.
Is everybody plenty of notice?
The fiscal year too, which is helpful.
Yeah, what's, what's the date that you have to re-up the rental licenses?
July first, every two years.
Then that would make sense. So we'll just plug that in.
So is everybody all right with this? And we'll make it ordinance number oh-two-dash-oh-five-dash-two-five, and we'll have to have a hearing at the March Town Council meeting to approve it.
I have a question, do we want to add any sort of, if there's an outstanding balance, then you can't get a rental license renewal?
Actually, I, I looked at rental housing ordinance as well, and I think the language in there now is sufficient to terminate a rental housing license. But that is an interesting point, that don't come looking for one if you owe us money. We'll, we'll lower that up a little bit.
Can you do that?
Yeah.
All right.
Can you also fix the spelling on my last name?
Well, I did, but I, when I tried to attach it, it, it didn't want to go, so. It's, it's right, and it will be righter when you see it again.
Thank you.
There was also a typo. Couldn't be, I don't see it.
Very much could be.
It was just the S was left off a sewer.
I will check. I'd go over it again, see, now that I don't have Linda, and I only have me, I thought I caught all the twenty-twenty-fives.
You may have been corrected, I, I saw it early, oh, there it is. Article, Article one, item A, it says usage rates and ewer.
Those are those pictures that they paint in Stillwell.
Not to be nitpicky, just saw it.
Well, I hate typos, and anybody who knows me knows that they embarrass me, so, I'm sorry.
Do I hear a motion to introduce ordinance number oh-two-dash-oh-five-dash-two-five?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance number oh-two-dash-oh-five-dash-two-five. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say, can I be saying aye? Introduced. Any other old business? Residents' concerns?
No one has signed.
All righty, announcements, I don't know when Public Works was planning on doing beautification day, but fire hydrant painting, along with hopefully beautification day, will be Saturday, April twenty-six. I have a lot of groups that want to come in and help that day, so if we can make it Saturday, April twenty-six, that'd be great. If Wayne needs to make bulk trash another day, then so be it, but Saturday, April twenty-six. And then again, May election, did I get approval from all the three judges for you?
Last year we did, so they should be good for, they're locked for three times, right? I have to double-check that. Yeah, but I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
All right, all right, thank you. Do I hear a motion for adjournment, or, I'm sorry, go to closed session?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second to go to closed session for general provisions, Article three dash three-zero-five, B seven, and also Article three dash three-zero-five, B one. All those in favor, say, can I be saying aye? Thank you. All right. Shaw, you have any closing words?
No? I'm going to call your teacher and tell him that you have a big report tomorrow, unless schools are two hours late.
They are.